To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a portion of our meeting reserved for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience today who'd like to approach the board publicly, please raise your hand. Okay, so you know we'll move on to the next agenda item, our consent agenda items, minutes, and the statement of receipts and expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any corrections or additions or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then passes. Move on to our action items, our superintendent's report.
Yes, so we started this last year with recognizing people as they retired from our district, and we are continuing that again this year. Last year we had two, and this year again we have two. And so we have Christine Schuzik, who's been with us for 20 years, and Diane Verpraskas, who's been here with 21. So ladies, if you would come up, we would like to recognize you and thank you for your years of service to our district. And an appreciation for that, we have a plaque that says, "Grafton School District with sincere appreciation and gratitude." And then it will say their names, and it says, "On the occasion of your retirement, the Grafton School District gratefully recognizes your," in this case it's 20 for Chris, and for Diane it'll be 21, "to the students and community of Grafton." So we want to give you that as a little plaque and thanks in that way. And then as you leave us, it's always nice to have something to wear to remember, you know, as school starts and you're missing us. You know, to have a little fleece for you to have, so they've chosen that, so we also have a little gift for you in that way, that we want to present on behalf of our board and on behalf of our entire district. Thank you for the impact you've had on our kids over the years, and we greatly appreciate that, and we wish you the best as you leave our district, and hopefully you'll be coming back to stay in touch with us, but we greatly appreciate your service to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a picture with you? Carrie, do you want to join?
Sure.
Of course.
Can you all scooch over just a little bit so I don't get the mic? There we go. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So we lose a lot of experience there with 20 and 21 years in our district, and truly a ton of impact they've had on kids' lives, but we know that they'll continue on in their future endeavors with family, and they're in good health, and we hope that that continues for them, and we want to thank them for that. So it's a great opportunity for the board to see people that have been impacting in our schools for a number of years, and opportunity to recognize them in our whole community. We want to make sure that they're recognized in that way. Yeah, so it's a fun way to start our night. This month is our Music in Our Schools Month, and so you'll see posters up all over the place, starting on March 3rd, all of our district bands are going to be performing in a concert at 7 o'clock in the Grafton High School auditorium with some UW bands as well. It's a great opportunity to hear some of our students, and it's a great opportunity in the month of March to celebrate music. And we're fortunate that we support the whole child, and music is a big part of that, and it's a great way for kids to be recognized. Graftonics just competed, and for the first time ever, they were able to advance to the semifinals of the acapella competition. They're going on to Illinois later on March 10th, and so it's an opportunity to celebrate them as well, but it's a great time to see our students in that way. So there's a lot of things that have happened at the high school, and I've asked Mr. Mancey to sort of come up and talk about some of the exciting things that have happened at the high school in the last couple of weeks.
Thanks, everyone. So we're going to kind of work off the board agenda in terms of other great awards that are already presented to our students, and I'm going to help Mr. Nelson with some pronunciation to make sure that everything's pronounced correctly.
And I think I moved your mic, so you probably want to move that mic back. I think that's my fault. Actually, I know it is my fault. I moved it for the students, so maybe you can hear it. Thank you, Rick. Sorry.
So as we mentioned, we have lots of great things going on. First of all, I'd like to recognize our automotives program. GHS seniors Trevor Geiskie and Nicholas Schmidt, who won the finals of the Adam Technicians of Tomorrow competition. Their next step is to head on to New York City over spring break, and it's the sixth consecutive year that a GHS team has won that competition. It's one of the most prestigious high school automotive competitions within the state. So certainly, congratulations to them. Next, we'll talk about a few of our art students who received awards at the 2018 Scholastic Art Awards, and those students include Nuva alum McKenna Amundson, Hannah Booback, Sophia de la Pasqua, Joey Isaacson, Abby Martella, Ashlyn Mikulajek, and Zingyu Zhang, also known as Zack. And these are the most awards won by GHS students in any single year. So kudos to our art program for a great showing at that competition. Next, we have our Future Business Leaders of America, who recently competed in their regional competition, and the following students were involved in that. Sidney Wojcik, Lila Takach, Elijah Voss, Zack Taylor, Lisbeth Huertas, Leona Meyer, and Hannah Wendorf. The following silver and gold medal winners qualified for the FBLA State Leadership Conference in the spring, and they'll be competing there. And those students are Ian Bold, Shantanu Shaduri, Sophia Skalman, Brandon Stern, Vashina Day, Sai Chitjala, Alex Pavlik, Josiah Thompson, Callan Hanley, Katie Lamb, and Jared Desatell. Jared earned his fourth consecutive trip to the state competition, so all four years he'll be competing at state and FBLA. And theme here, this was a record-setting 11 first-place gold medals earned by GHS students. So lots of great things happening this time within our business department. Next, we'll move on to our swim team, GHS boys swim team and their performances at the state swim meet. Nick Starr took sixth place in the 200 IM and seventh place in the 500 freestyle. Our 200 medley relay of Gavin Depius, Starr, Matt Fisher, and Trevor Bodart were ninth place, and the 400 freestyle relay, once again of Bodart, O'Connor, Fisher, and Starr, were in 10th place. I also had a couple of others to add. While we were talking about it in diving, Ben Niswenger placed 12th, and Gavin Depius in his individual events, 100-yard backstroke, 100-yard breaststroke, placed 12th and 11th respectively in the state. So lots of great things happening. I think we're 11th overall in the state in Division 2 with a very, very young team, believe only lose one senior moving into next year. So now we'll talk about wrestling. Wrestling, we have three wrestlers who qualified for the state meet, great number, Nick Rapp, Alec Davis, and Ellis Flager. And that tournament, that state tournament was this last weekend, got some exciting news from that. Alec Davis was a sixth-place finisher at the state meet, which means he made it on the podium, he received a medal. And diving into our history, we believe that this is the 12th wrestler in school history to medal at state. So a 12th wrestler in school history to medal at state, so we're proud of all the wrestlers, but Alec in particular for his accomplishment. And if I'm allowed to continue, girls gymnastics this last weekend just obtained the sectional championship, so as a team. So they were sectional champs as a team, they'll be moving on as a team to the state tournament. Our representatives are Abby Sebalka and Paige Arnold, and both girls also qualified as individuals at the state meet as well, so they'll be competing individually. And I might as well throw in that our girls basketball program accomplished 18 wins this season, which is the most wins they've had in the last seven years, and they just concluded their season this last Friday night. So I think that covers most of the things that are happening and the great things that our kids are accomplishing outside of the classroom. So, thank you.
And with all the, to finish my update with all the recent shooting that's occurred and then the shootings that have occurred over time, we've reviewed our safety procedures. I'd emailed updates to all of our families and staff and to the board. As a district admin team, we'd met at our monthly safety meeting, and then it followed it up again last week with another review of all of our processes, making sure the processes that we have down in place and the procedures we're actually following, and making sure that we're all on the same page with those pieces. In my construction update, I'll talk a little about looking ahead to next year and some of the things that, with the construction projects that we're doing, the things that we're doing to make our schools even more safe. So that'll be an update that I'll have with you on that. On Friday, I had lunch with Chief Wenton, and we always have a police officer as part of our safety committee, but I had lunch with him just to talk over what we're doing, the response that we had. On Friday, there was a false alarm at the high school where electrical system had a fault, and so the kids, students were outside for the fire drill, and how the police responded with that, helping us, making sure that we're in a safe spot, no matter where our students are, how we can improve that. So we're always reevaluating, working with the police, and making sure our students and staff are safe in that way. So I know I talked to Joe a little about this today.
Thanks for doing that. Jeff and I talked about what can we do, you know, what can we get moving forward, maybe if we could have a presentation from people services to see what types of programs we currently have in place, what could we maybe be doing better or adjusting? I know we have the PBIS, we have second steps in elementary school, and we'd like to also see what is in middle and high school, you know, whether we could hear from the psychologists or guidance counselors, I think that would be helpful to see what we could do moving forward, see our program, if they're working or if we could do something different.
Yep, we'd be happy to do that. Yeah, we're talking about preventative pieces is what we're talking about there, and bullying, anti-bullying, things that we do. Think of the courage retreat that we have with students, with all elementary students, but there's a lot of pieces that are to that, and we can bring some people that are running those to the board and the community, so you can hear some of those things that are occurring. Great. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so we have a John Long Middle School presentation on deck.
We'll turn it over to Mr. Deering and his team. He's looking for his clicker.
Click for me? Real, real. I can sit here? Good. Get on the mic. All right. So we will give you an update with some highlights on where we are at the middle school, some initiatives where we're at with that, and then we will end, the highlight will end with highlighting forensics, and we'll actually have a student performance for you, so we'll save the best in this case. So we'll start by talking about MAP testing, and this is the first year that we actually are testing all students at all three times. Historically, we've only tested in the winter, students who are maybe in intervention or we have some concerns about. This year, we tested all so we could see how we're growing and look at that correlation of how, what the prediction is as we look ahead to the floor exam, which is coming up here in March. So new this year was we had student goal setting. In fall, students took their first fall MAP, and then we had them set goals of where they were at, and then in winter they could look at those and readjust, so that's the first year we're doing that. And we're looking to set an incentive if we meet cohort RIT goals at the end of the year. An idea we have is if we can meet it, we can do an off-campus lunch field trip for kids as an incentive to work hard and keep learning and strive to get there. So where are we so far cohort RIT growth this year? All cohorts, their RIT scores are above the national norm, anywhere from 5.2 to 11.4 points above the norm. We test in reading, math, and science, so those three areas. We want to be above average growth for the year. If you recall on our school report card a couple of years ago, growth was one thing that we struggled with at John Long, so looking to be above the average growth, which in talks with Rick as our district deck, we talked about looking at what the average student would grow and what's expected for their growth RIT for the year. Being that our actual classes are above the average RIT, they would be expected to grow fewer points, but we're still just taking what an average student would grow in a year and applying that to the whole cohort RIT. And when you apply that, even with being, starting at a higher RIT, everybody is on pace to still be above average RIT growth. When we look at our student cohort growth indexes, they are all above the 50th percentile, so performing and growing at a faster-than-average rate, which is great to see, and it's great to report out and actually have that piece of data midway through the year to give feedback not only to the teachers but students that we are on track and doing great stuff. Really want to highlight, 7th and 8th grade reading have already exceeded what we would expect them to grow for a whole year as a cohort. So kids are making great gains there, and I know math has come up, you know, as we look district-wide, they are also on pace to be above average growth for the year in all three grade levels. So great things to report on. MAP is giving us great data back, and we're using it to drive some instructional decisions, whether students need extra support or if we're ready to take kids to the next level. So great use of MAP this year. PBIS update, our behavior piece. Brett Demmer, our internal coach, does a fantastic job leading this. We have a group that we are a tier-one school last year, and we're moving to tier-two training this year. And our tier-two is actually in March going to be rolling out our new check-in, check-out system with students that are identified, whether it's for behavior, academic, there's various levels. And the cool thing that having Brett Demmer as your internal coach and being Google certified is that instead of having kids track paper on, everything will be done electronically with Google, easy to access for parents for how their students perform for the day, easy for teachers to also check in and check out with students to give them their points. Falcon feathers is our positive reinforcement, again, all electronic. We are up over 1,200 falcon feathers, positive reinforcements this year, from the same point that we were last year, and our minor behavioral data that we are, we're down 439 minor behavioral incidents from last year. At the PBIS training, Brett shared with the staff that you want to be at a 5 to 1 ratio of positive to negative. Currently, we are at a 7.3 to 1 ratio, so we're acknowledging kids more at a 7.3 to 1 rate. So doing a great job with our PBIS and our initiative, and we look forward to adding to that as a group. Myself and four other of our staff members are going to go to RTI Solution Tree in May and learn response to intervention, and look to take our academic behavior, create our inverted triangle, and incorporate PBIS into that. So exciting to be bringing all that together next year. New this year that we brought back, and most schools are doing this, we did not have this, so we wanted to start Student of the Month program. Each month, we highlight two students per grade level, 6th, 7th, 8th grade, and two students in related arts. Our teachers nominate students, it can be off of whose weather showed they've shown great growth, great leadership, strong academics, it doesn't have to just be academics, so that was kind of a nice thing, we're highlighting kids that are showing. Some were recognized from growth just from last year, this year they've shown great maturity, they're doing better in school. So again, another way to identify eight students a month. You can see on the upper right, that's an example, we get yard signs made, and we deliver those, and those are going to the students' yard, and then we have a spot on our wall in the bottom that has the students' pictures that are displayed for the month. So nice to have that, and just another way to recognize kids in a positive manner at John Long this year. Just to recap, we had, obviously we brought this last month, our scheduling process has completed, and we're getting ready to start registering students for the next school year, but we're moving to next year where we have our new schedule, Intervention Enrichment Period, that was highlighted last month, that will be added so we can do universal interventions for students in need, 6th through 8th grade, but then also provide enrichment courses to students to expose them to curriculum that they wouldn't normally be exposed to. No back-to-back blocks, and we feel that we're still offering diverse opportunities for kids in the elective areas, still being able to participate in band, world language, STEM, business, so multiple opportunities for kids to be involved in activities. Still will offer the before-school choir and bands as well. So excited to be going into next year with a new schedule. 100-day plan, just wanted to give you an update. A big focus, as along with the high school, as you remember, was focusing around common formative assessments. Our goal in the second part of the year was to be reviewing peer work and receiving peer feedback. Every other month, we're reviewing a common formative assessment. Teachers will share, they've been partnered up, and they can, they have three different options to get feedback on their common formative assessment, whether they can look for fairness, validity, and reliability. Teacher, peer looks at that and lets them know if they're meeting that. They could choose to get feedback on how their questions are looking, is my short constructive response question, is it worded so that it's clear and students can perform on it? Or they can look for alignment to standards to get feedback on that. And we still are also doing every other month where you go and teamed up with that same peer, and you're doing an observation of that peer and giving feedback on how the instruction's going in the class. We're moving in a great direction, and I put Mr. Worsall that, we asked Mr. Worsell to lead part of our last staff meeting to talk about how has the common form of assessment journey gone for him and where he's at, so we put together some highlights of Mr. Worsell talking with the staff.
One of the strategies I'd like to do is instead of going directly from the standard and making my CFA, I look at what the standard has and some of the tests that I've already spent time making, and I fuse those together to make my CFA. So my CFA not only has content that directly relates to my standard, but also has the same language and the same content as my test. So I use my CFA as a pre-test about a week out from my summative. So I pull all my students that got below a 2 on my CFA, so all students that are in the D range or even the F range, that they had to come in and see me for a mandatory meeting of reteaching where we pinpointed the things on the CFA, what wasn't working. I have brought my retake population from 35 kids down to eight kids. It doesn't focus just on the lower students, it helps us identify the higher students. I mean, if you have a student who's getting threes and fours on CFA and also drops to a 1, that's something you can investigate and look into. Up front was a lot of extra work. I had to put things together, I had to organize it, I had to grade it, and give it back the next day so you could have that immediate feedback, but again, it made my retake population go from 35 to like eight. They go, "Oh, I got a 1, what's this?" Like, well, let's talk about it. So it's a good conversation started with the students, and for the students that don't want to start that conversation, you probably have to initiate it, but it gives, it's a venue to pry into what's not clicking or what is clicking and why that's happening.
So that was just something that we had, we, our TLC members, we had gotten together, we were talking, and Mr. Worsell joined the conversation, and he kind of like said that to us in our meeting, and we're like, "You need to say that to the staff, like, that is exactly why we're doing this." And you can hear from that. Lot of work up front, but taking that retake population from, you know, a third of the class down to eight students, using your common form of assessment to really dig down and find where students are struggling, and having those one-on-one meetings with them, or bring them in during win, or we do lunch bunch often in the middle school where maybe you're missing something, you come and eat lunch with Mr. Worsell, and he works with you one-on-one. Another thing that I wanted to highlight is what do we do with the results? And this actually is Mr. Anderson's, but this is a protocol assessment, so after a common form of assessment, this is also part of this process, they're doing a protocol action plan. We had four options for them to pick, most teachers selected this one, where it just identifies where students are struggling, aren't struggling. Scroll down for me. So, and we didn't have names on here, but here's students who have not yet mastered the standard. So instead of like, when we think old, we correct the test, we give it back, and we move on. Now here are students that need to make sure they haven't quite mastered everything, so I'm going to set up additional conferring times with them. I'm going to ask a few students to come in during win. So putting on paper, what are my next steps to help these students be successful? And if you keep going, action steps for kids who've got it. Find a more challenging text for them next time. Have them choose an article that can push them to a higher level. And then at the very bottom of this, it talks about concerns that maybe Mr. Anderson had, concerns about assessment scoring, and then changes for next time. I'll place more of us on connecting topics since central meeting. So again, these are things that come from common form of assessments. The work that our teacher is doing specifically gives not only them feedback, but allows them to reach their students on a more specific individual basis. So really cool to see that happening in our initial level with the 100-day plan and common form of assessment. Sometimes you can't always see hard data points, but that's the great work that's coming out of it, and hearing Mr. Worsell just talk about, I'm reaching a lot more kids exactly where their needs need to be met, and we're making sure that they're successful then when we are timed for the summative assessment. Last thing I want to highlight before we turn over forensics was this fall, it was we always come back, great performance put on by the students Wizard of Oz, directed by Mr. Arndt and Mr. Jackson, who's also in the audience. Really cool this year, on Thursday night, the week of the show was the first-ever free senior show, where we had seniors come in and they got a free viewing, and that was their opening, essentially opening night for students, and set new attendance records for each night, Friday through Sunday, so they continue to get better and better. Well, we re-announced what next year is, correct?
Yes.
Next year is?
Shrek.
Shrek. The musical is coming to John Long Middle School.
It's going to be spectacular. Get your tickets now.
Outstanding. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Jackson, our fearless leaders of our forensics team, and they do a phenomenal job, and I wanted to give them this opportunity to highlight their program and also have some students be highlighted. I'm going to get out of your way, John.
So, some of you might be wondering what forensics is, and to kind of ease your minds, it's not working with dead bodies. That's what I thought going through. It's not true. So what it is, is it's actually 18 different categories of different variations of public speaking and/or acting. So on our team, we have about 50 students that compete in these 18 different categories. What's kind of cool is you take something that's commonly a big fear for people, like public speaking or acting, and it's something that kids get to try out, they develop competence, they have a lot of fun, and that's really what it is. And as you can see from the pictures, our students have been very successful this year, and we were very successful last year as well. There's actually 115 schools that are in our conference, and we took third out of that last year. So, I mean, we've been pretty successful this year as well. I mean, we've taken second at a meet with 27 different schools at it. We've had various students win medals in individual performances as well. And actually, you can see up in the picture, the two students we have performing tonight are Kayla Schopak and Abby Garvey. In the last two meets that they've entered into, they've taken gold at both meets for group acting. You want to tell them a little bit about group acting and what that all entails?
You know, group acting is where you have anyone, anywhere from two to like five or six kids, they have...
Two to seven?
Two to seven.
Thank you. We're pointing out in front of the board, I appreciate it.
Two to seven, like I said the first time.
And they get how much time?
Five to 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Five to 10 minutes, and they get to either find a piece that's already been written by somebody else and put their own spin on it, or they can write their own pieces and present their own pieces as well for the judges. Every piece, regardless of the category, is judged on a 70-point scale. You have to have an average of 62 points in three separate meets just to qualify for state, and this year we are bringing 32.
I think it's going to end up being about 30 teams or entries to state. On our team, we have, I think, right now about 36 or 37 entries, so the most, majority of our team so far has qualified. We're four-fifths of the way through our season, we have one more meet to go in Plymouth before state, so I mean, we have probably another two or three that might qualify, so we could end up with about 30 to 31 teams qualifying.
Which is awesome, and even the teams that don't qualify, just to see the growth that they go through from the start of the year to the end of the year, that confidence they build up over the course of the year is truly awesome, it's a rewarding experience. We'd like to regale you with a delightful performance.
Do you want to tell them what regale means, because I didn't know earlier?
It's going to be really good.
All right, so we'll move this.
Why are you moving the chair?
They said they wanted two chairs.
Yes, please.
It might not be great, they could be, you know, overhyping it, I don't know. So yeah, I'm Abby Garvey, this is Kayla, and we do group acting, like I said.
I don't get to introduce myself?
No, no, you don't. So yeah, this is what we did this year. Throughout their childhood, kids learn lots of lessons, just like our characters Kitty and Monique from Misfits by Ken Bradbury. In our piece, two girls learned to have an open mind and to try new things. They come to school with a fixed mind as to how school should be. Join us as they truly learn what it's like to go to school.
Is this it? They said, "All the way down the hallway, turn left at the water fountain."
But I didn't see a water fountain.
I didn't either, I had my eyes closed.
Me too.
You want to open them?
No.
Can you go through a whole year of kindergarten with your eyes closed?
I don't think so.
Why not?
You're going to run into things.
We're going to have to open them eventually.
Fine.
On three. One, two, two and a half.
Hold on, Kitty.
Three. Oh, no!
What's wrong?
There's other people here. Mommy didn't say there'd be other people, I thought I had it all to myself.
Well, maybe they're just visiting.
But they have backpacks, just like us.
And gym shoes, just like us.
But they look stupid and confused. Just like us, I want to go home.
We got to do this, Kitty.
This isn't fair, life was so good. I got up, I ate breakfast, I played with my dollies, and the next day I did it all over. Then they send me here.
We got to deal with this, Kitty, because then we get to go to college and get a job, and then we can retire, and then we can play again.
Can't we just skip the school part?
I don't think so, Kitty.
Oh, no.
What?
There are boys here. Which ones are they?
They're the scary ones that are pushing each other.
My daddy's a boy, does he push? He makes funny noises after he eats.
What was that noise?
That was a boy. Monique?
Yeah?
I don't think I'm going to like it here, it's too different. Who's she?
Oh, the tall ones are the teachers.
Where's the TV? I've never been in a room without a TV.
Oh, it's up there on the wall.
It's too high. I'm not going to be able to see that when I lay on my tummy.
I don't think we get to lay on our tummies here Kitty, I think we have to sit in desks.
I wonder which ones are ours. Maybe it's those two empty ones.
You're so smart Kitty.
Monique?
Yeah?
They're staring at us. So what do we do?
Sit down.
Okay. I meant in a chair.
Right, sorry. This seat is hard, I want my couch back. Miss Teacher Lady, do you have a couch? Why are they laughing at me Kitty?
That sounded stupid.
Oh. Our names? You want us to say our names? She's pointing at you Kitty.
My name is what? Speak louder. My name is Kitty. Like the cat.
Oh, they like you Kitty, they're laughing.
And they'll be calling me Cat Girl all year. She's pointing to you now.
So what do I do?
Stand up.
Okay.
Now say your name.
I can't.
Why not?
Because I don't remember it.
Monique.
What?
Monique.
What do you want?
Your name is Monique.
Are you sure? Because I don't want to fail my first assignment.
Monique, Monique.
My name is Monique, Monique. Oh, they're laughing at me again.
They've never seen a girl with the same first and last name before.
Me neither, who is she?
You...
Why would my mother do such a thing?
Maybe she forgot.
Oh.
We should be quiet now, we need to remember these names.
Why?
We might marry one someday.
But they're so short.
They should grow.
I'm going to marry a giant?
Pretty much.
That's so cool.
Tristan, Angelina, Abby, Tris... What are you doing?
I'm not growing Kitty, there's something wrong with me.
Well, obviously there's something wrong with you, we've known that for years.
Oh man.
Just relax, it's not so hard.
Okay.
Oh, get out your crayons, get out your crayons, it's time to color.
Okay, okay. Kitty, where'd mommy put my crayons? I can't find my crayons.
What'd you do with them?
Oh no. Were they all different colors?
Yep, that would pretty much describe a crayon.
Oh no. Kitty, I was so nervous this morning, I was so, so nervous and...
What?
And these kids behind me on the bus, they were talking, and that just made me even more nervous and...
What'd you do?
I ate them Kitty. Oh no!
Why would you do that?
Because I always eat when I get nervous, and I thought, geez mom, what a weird lunch. But I ate them anyways.
Everything's going to be all right.
Okay.
Here, take one of my crayons. Color.
Okay.
And don't eat it.
But I can't.
Why not?
Because I don't know what color the letter A is.
Any color.
Is it yellow?
Yes.
Is it blue?
No.
Is it yellow and not green, and I failed my first coloring assignment?
No one cares, just color.
Okay. But I don't want to.
Want now?
I want the B.
But I have the B.
But the Bs are more fun than the As.
My B.
Can I please have the B? Can I, can I please have the B? Can I please, can I please have the B?
Take the B.
Are you mad at me?
No.
But you act like you're mad at me.
Well, that's because I'm not at you.
Why? Over the B? Where are you going?
The potty.
You have to go to the potty?
No, I have to get away from you.
Oh.
What are you doing?
I have to go to the potty.
No you don't.
Well, you can't just leave me here.
How am I supposed to get away from you if you're coming with me?
Just pretend like I'm not even there.
Miss Teacher Lady, Miss Teacher Lady, I need to go to the potty. Can I go to the potty?
Me too, me too.
Only if we go together?
Yes.
This is going to be a long thirteen years.
I have to go to kindergarten? Thirteen years?
Until we graduate.
That's a lot of crayons Kitty.
Monique?
Yeah?
I'm about ready to choke you!
Over the B, because you can't have the B.
You're not this dumb, you just need a closet. No, we weren't fighting. No, we leave, we...
Yeah, she was about to choke me.
That's not what...
Yeah, over the B.
That's not what...
Yes. Now we don't have to go back to kindergarten Kitty. We get to visit the principal on the very first day. Isn't that exciting?
So exciting.
Think he's going to call her with us?
I'm sure he will, Monique.
You know what I'm going to ask?
What?
I'm going to ask if we can be in the same class for the next thirteen years.
Great.
You know what?
What?
Think I'm going to like it here.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the...
Not for me privately.
Rehearsal time. How much?
Um, well rehearsals every Tuesday and Thursday until four fifteen-ish. We don't actually practice that much.
But that's what we're supposed to. That's the time they have set aside for practice.
Thank you for saying that out loud as well.
Hey, they're asking about us, you know? It's not, it's not true for everyone, I mean, lots of people practice, we're just not one of them.
What made you want to join forensics?
Actually, we didn't sign up for forensics, Mr. Anderson signed us up and wouldn't let us quit. But it ended up turning out to be a lot of fun, and so in hindsight, I mean, I guess I can't be so mad at him anymore.
Yeah, he signed us up in sixth grade, and we did sixth, seventh, and eighth grade together as a team, and all three years, we did pretty darn well, so, yeah, it's really good.
Great job.
Are you one of them?
Uh, no, we just do one category.
And you've been involved in this category all three years?
Yeah. Not in this, not in this category.
But together, you've done something?
Yeah.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Very cool.
I'm afraid to move the table alone, you're going to break it.
Well done ladies.
I'm more worried about the microphone on the table.
Don't worry. You did great.
Is this still part of the act, or is this really...
No, this is just us.
All right, if not, that's...
Any questions for...
Yeah, so me, I'm a part of the school that aren't as entertaining as that.
Awesome. No, it's great, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so we move on to our next agenda, and that was great. So we have on the agenda the TIF Joint Review Board Discussion. This has been a agenda item that's been kind of evolving as the last few weeks have gone by, because this became a real hot topic for a while now. Last I heard from our representative to the Joint Review Board, that that meeting has been canceled, so maybe some people are backing away. We don't have any official word, but people have talked a lot about that. We thought we'd keep it on the agenda just because it's timely and frankly, a lot of people on this board haven't... Thank you again, everyone. Had some thoughts on the Joint Review Board and on this particular project, so I thought we'd keep it on the agenda in case anyone wanted to discuss. We were going to give Jerry direction as to how we wanted him to represent the board at that meeting, and now that's no longer necessary, but we thought we'd leave it on. I don't, Jerry, what do you know? You heard on Friday that it was canceled?
Yeah, Friday I got an email from the law firm that was setting that up and said the meeting's canceled for March nineteenth, which was when the first meeting was set. So, pretty much ended that.
No talk of rescheduling or anything like that?
No.
So I don't, is anybody, we can make this a short discussion, is there any thoughts on that? I guess we were going to talk about how it relates to the project, and now I know that that discussion needs to be had right now, and until it comes back on the table, we can then discuss it at that point if it does, but at this point, I mean frankly, I think I've talked to a number of people, and people are theorizing that they're backing away from the project. We haven't heard that officially, but you know, that seems to be the sentiment, and canceling the Joint Review Board meeting would make sense. So I guess my suggestion would be if there's not a lot to talk about right now, let's wait and see if it comes back and becomes relevant. If it does, we'll have a discussion about direction on that. Anyone want to weigh in on it?
Do we know the date in which the village will make a decision on this?
They reached out to the village administrator, Jesse Tyes, today, and March fifth, the board will come together, and they'll make a statement at that point. So nothing has been officially done at all, but March fifth is when they have their next board meeting, and that's a discussion item for them.
When we last met, and since we, that meeting when we talked, there was a certain amount of urgency because things were being fast-tracked, and so that's why we wanted to have this on the agenda tonight. The urgency is not there anymore, so we can move on to the next agenda item unless someone else has, can weigh in on it.
I think there was an article in the Journal Sentinel today about it as well, saying it's pretty much dead.
Okay. Okay. So move on to our personnel report, Jeff.
So personnel report, so one of the teachers that we saw tonight, Christine Schuzick, third grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary School, has turned in her retirement papers. So we're asking the board to approve that, her retirement. And then informational is a new hire, Sherry Cornell, a 4K aide at Grafton Elementary School that's starting, but we would ask for the board's approval to accept Christine Schuzick's retirement.
A motion of that effect?
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, and it passes. Okay, so SWSA membership discussion.
Yes, so we are part of the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance membership, and along with that comes a, there's a annual fee that we pay for that, that the association contracts with legal counsel to serve as legal counsel, legislative updates, advocating for public education and so forth. But with it being a disbursement of public funds, we need to have the board make a motion to retain membership in SWSA. There's a number of districts in our area, there's twenty-nine districts that are made up of the SWA, and it's alphabetical, but all of them in our area. Cedarburg is not, Northern Ozaki is not, but I think of Port, McQuan, Whitefish Bay, I'm sorry?
Montney Falls.
Montney Falls, Pewalki, Elm Brook, Brown Deer, Foxmont Bayside, Nicolay, all those, Greendale, Greenfield, Franklin, Franklin Oak Creek, Oak Creek Franklin, are all part of that consortium as well, and they advocate on our behalf as well as keep us up to date on various things that are happening. So we believe it's a wise use of funds, but it does require board approval.
Do you know how long we've been participating? Does anybody know?
Hmm.
This is mid, maybe the third year.
Third year, I think? That's right.
I don't think it's any more than that.
What have we gained in terms of this investment?
So you gain, when we gain regular updates of what's occurring, we also gain having someone at the table advocating for public education. And so we see it as a, that's why the group, that's why you have so many districts that are at the table, putting in a fee, so that as a group, there's a pie, that then they can advocate for public education, and the needs that we have as public education versus those that are in a private or in other types of school situations where they have other people funding those things, and other donors that are funding that. And it provides us updates that go with that, opportunities to go to various pieces. That's a harder thing for us to be able to go out there, Joe and I have talked about that, because the meetings occur in Pewalki for the most part, so it's hard to drive that far for a couple-hour meeting, but when it's a relevant topic, then it's an opportunity for us to be able to hear about that and have someone advocate on our behalf.
Are there other consortiums that you're aware of? No. Or similar in scope?
Mm-mm. This is really the only, this is the one that everyone uses. If you're not involved in this, then you're really not involved in one. Nope.
Yeah, we started with this when Julia championed it, and she was very active and assured us, and I think, Joe, you probably agree, that we sort of underutilize our membership, you know, we could do much more, we could be involved in more, we could create activity if we wanted to. I mean, that, and that just, you know, depends on the temper of the board, how active you want to be in this sort of thing, but it does give us a finger on the pulse, and you're at least in the mix, and you can hear about what's going on, but you know, and Joe, you probably...
What's nice is that if there's an issue you want to talk about, you can also bring it up to them. Like I did suggest talking about what had just happened in Florida, so they're going to be looking at, in March, looking at different mental health type things we could be looking at in our schools.
Also get the, we also get an access to the Hanover Report. So the Hanover Report does a ton of different research-based studies that can relate to a myriad of various things, whether it's staff retention, whether it's school-based mental health, what are the best things that are best practices for utilizing those things? So there's a wide range of things that Hanover Research does, that this does provide us access to as well. And that's sort of, Hanover Research is known as a highly respected gold standard for looking at various ideas and so forth.
Okay, so we need a motion to spend the funds?
The motion needs to be to approve the resolution.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the resolution.
For second? Chair, second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. And my computer's locked up, there we go. So we're going to talk about some internet filtering and reporting.
Yeah, so we're, I've had Rick come and speak to us, he spoke to our admin team just a couple weeks ago about this. He'd met with my cabinet and discussed this a month or so ago, and so we've asked him to come and talk to the board and our community about what we're doing, looking at student internet filtering, safeguards we have in place, and what that will look like in the future, as well what it isn't. So that's what we want to have him talk about.
Right. We're going to be using a new product at Grafton, and it matches the scope of what we've been currently doing for the last fifteen years with the internet, but it's going to allow us to do some more things in terms of collecting information and data, and in presenting it to the admin team. Jeff felt strongly that we need to share this with the board. it to the admin team, Jeff felt strongly that we need to share this with the board. The legal requirements for schools across the United States really come from a federal congressional act, SIPA, Children's Internet Protection Act, it actually, there was a first go of it in the mid 90s, and it actually was redone in 2000, and basically tells schools they need to have a technical block in place to block obscene or harmful content for children. And generally, that technology is always what we would call like a URL blocker, so it maintains a database of what are known obscene sites and blocks them, and so the law has not been updated, but the technology has changed, and one of the problems is as the internet has moved forward in terms of being, running from a secure login where you're running traffic off of HTTPS, that that traffic becomes invisible to a traditional content blocker, and so, actually Kara, I'm going to have to use the keyboard here to go back. If I could go back in my slide, oh, there we go, let's use this. And so with this new product, and this is nothing that's out of the ordinary with other districts, a lot of my colleagues that are the districts are in the process of having moved to something like this or moving to this, and what it allows us to do is inspect the HTTPS traffic for what type of information is passed back and forth. Right now, like when I said, we're doing the URL content filtering, with Smooth Wall, with our new product, SIPA Filter, we have increased reporting capabilities, we also went with this product too because it allows us to load balance between two different internet connections, we create some redundancy for us, it has integration with PC, Macs, and iPads, and Chromebooks, and it also integrates with the Google login, and, I'm going to go back one slide here again to make sure I'm not off topic with that, okay. Currently, we do not have a good record of user web traffic with the old product that we had, with this new product, we will, so we will be able to not only block the URL, but we also can collect them time, device, and who the actual user is, and this has kind of driven the need of looking at this new product too, because often we'll get a request from a principal for, can you verify that that was the user using that Chromebook, and this product will allow us to do that. Like I said, our current content filter, if you hit an obscene URL, it's blocked, but like I showed here earlier, bad stuff can be seen without going to the URL, so like if you are using Google and just searching for images, those sometimes will get beat past a traditional content filter, and so this kind of drives the need for inspecting the HTTPS traffic that is going between the student computers and the internet. This is kind of a depiction of how it would work, and basically on our student computers only that are used by students and owned by the district, so it's not the student computers that students bring into the district, or cell phones that students bring into the district that connect to our network, but only with the devices that are owned by the district that are used by students, we're going to be inspecting that traffic, and that will allow us then to actually log specifically the sites and site traffic that they go to. The reporting is much more robust than we've ever had in the past, before we would have to do a lot of searching through logs, this actually will give us a lot of granular reports that are much more effective and useful when a principal or assistant principal has a question for the tech department. Now, I asked other districts in the area if they are doing the inspection of student-owned devices, so this would be if a student brought in a cellphone or a student brought in a laptop to class, and the majority of our surrounding districts are no. There is one district that has been doing it where they're inspecting the actual student-owned devices, and that, if we were to go that route, we would have to do a lot, a greater level of communication to parents, we are going to be only doing this with the devices that we own that students use. The proposal of what we're going to be doing with this URL reporting and the content filter does not at all violate or contradict anything that we currently have in our policies. In our policies and our procedures for student usage, we state that we will be inspecting the traffic that students go to and that we will be blocking the obscene content, so this actually will allow us to continue doing that, but will be also have the ability to create granular reports. We are going to be keeping the logs at a set amount of 90 days, so after 90 days, the system will be purged of the 90th day of internet search for how the students use that. We are going to be creating accounts for principals to actually log in. The first rollout of this, we are not planning on creating teacher accounts, although I know at some districts, they do do that, where the teachers actually can log into the filter and generate reports. We're going to start out with just having the principals, and if there is requests for information, is a student on task or not, that can be handled like a traditional behavioral question, a referral to the principal. Trying to think, are there any questions on this? I know in the explanation, I gave to the board, I put information in there, yes.
So when they're on the computers, when they log in, will they just be using their computer? When you use a computer, do you have an account?
You'd be logging in with your Google account, and then it will be then taking that Google account login and basically then registering itself with the filter.
Okay. And you talked about inappropriate content, what, I know there's a lot of YouTube that people, or kids probably don't.
Correct, and what we do, and I included it in the board description there, depending on the grade level, we, there's a restricted YouTube filter and then a regular YouTube Personally, as an educator, YouTube has far more benefit than it is, yes, there is, there is material that would be considered objectionable, YouTube does a fairly good job of keeping obscene pornographic material off of it, but they're not perfect, but we do restrict based on the different grade levels, there's a strict filtering for YouTube use that I have in place for the elementary students.
So what do you say is Google, that's most?
Well, with the internet, that's one of the problems, is that the way these sites function is, they don't, they used to be like, there was this one address that had something bad, and now it's basically ported or viewable through any sites, so whether you're using Google or Yahoo or whatever search engine you're using, you can, you know, a lot of times, you know, come in contact with something that might not be, might not be appropriate.
Rick, what's the breakdown as far as student-owned devices versus district-owned?
I don't have a specific number for you, I can, I can say, for instance, if you walk into an AP high school course, you will see potentially even 50/50. Not in yours, but I've walked into AP English courses and I've seen, you know, many MacBook Pros that we haven't purchased for students, and then there's other courses where students just won't, won't bring their own device, so it depends on the course.
But their own device could also be their smartphone, so that's also, so if you were to say like, how many kids have a smartphone, like that would be a, Mr. Johnson, you'd say that's vast majority?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they have the opportunity to use it, they will.
Then they would, so that would be, that's the other student-owned device, and concern would be, when does that stop, when they leave here, all those pieces, how are we gathering information? We're looking at the devices that we currently provide to students in our school.
Right. Our plan is to implement this over in the next few months and to, you know, work with the principals on how the reporting works and those types of things, so.
Thank you, Rick. Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Because the next one is state assessment, approval of state assessment parent opt-out, so we are starting with, so that's why I asked Rick to stay, because he's our DAC, and so he will be taking care of this, we start with, state assessments start tomorrow, so if you walk down by the gym and the auxiliary gym, thank you, there's tables set up there, counselors are down there setting up for the board meeting, Mr. Manti was down there with his crew getting that set up, so now's a good time to be talking to the board about the process that we follow for parents to opt-out.
The state basically quotes the statutes that allow parents the ability to opt-out of the state-managed assessments, and what we're going to be doing at Grafton is just basically following the guidance provided by DPI, and I included in the board brief there just the straight Q and A off of DPI's website, if you look under their Q and A for forward exam, but it's the same language if you looked under the Q and A for ACT. We are going to be following their recommendations, and also in the non-required areas, so those are like the areas three, five, grades seven, eight, we are going to be allowing at the board's discretion and for parents to submit in writing to the principal if their child can be opted out of the exam, and so we're going to be following that guidance, and then I'm asking the board for approval that we will be following these procedures, that if there is a parent request to opt-out of any of the exams, including the required and the additional areas tested, that students will be able to opt-out.
Any questions? When parents opt out, does that affect the district at all as far as?
As an aggregate score to the district, it does not affect us on the test participation rate, it might in the future, okay, right, this past year, they dropped it from the report card, the year before, if you exceeded a certain threshold of 5%, it would, so last year it didn't, okay? Now, it would theoretically affect the district in terms of a lost score that might go into the aggregate, so if we have a whole number of high-performing students and they just don't want to take the test, that negatively affects us as a community because that score is one less score to go into aggregate score, but as a whole, right now, it's not, but Jeff pointed out in her meeting the other day, this message of the superintendents is, it might come back in the future, there's no guarantee.
The future might be this year, so it was very ambiguous as to whether or not, if people opted out and you got more than 5%, because if you get more than 5% in the past, it was a five-point reduction, and like five points, so if you had an 82, you went to a, if you had an 82 overall, you went to a 77, so it was a massive deduction that could truly change what level you were at on that report card, but at this point, they haven't told us yet.
Just for the ACT, I mean, SFR, Forward, and what's the dynamic learning map?
Dynamic learning maps is for students with cognitive disabilities.
But that's not, map testing does not?
No, map testing, that's only internal. But you may, you may have a student, if Mr. Manti had a high school student this year who got a 36 in ACT, now that person was a senior, she was a senior, but if she had taken that already this year before the junior test, she may opt-out of it, well, more than likely, she's, I mean, unless she had like the worst day ever, she would have beat our average, right? So you want that student to test during that time, but, so could it hurt? Sure, you don't know in that way.
So those tests dramatically affect the report card before, may again, probably will again, arguably an item that we have no control over because it's not up to us.
Parental control.
What is the state trying to say by making, by having it affect our report card? Are they anticipating some action on our part to just coerce everybody to make sure they take them or discourage parents from opting out?
Well, the concern is, is that these tests have become more and more high stakes, and so you see districts, whether it's, you know, other districts in various states who teachers have been caught cheating on high-stakes testings with students, and so the idea would be that a district could, you know, select certain students and say, I think it'd be great if you didn't take the test tomorrow, because that would help our score, so there, that's the concern, is you really want all students taking it so that you know how all of your students are performing, and the concern would be is if you start saying, well, it doesn't matter how many kids opt-out, that maybe districts would influence people inappropriately to have them not take the test, which, that would not be a representation of that district, of that school, and especially in certain areas where you, maybe you don't have very many students in a subgroup, that you want to get a supergroup or you want to do something else, there's just ways you can manipulate the data that I think they're very nervous about that, but at the same time, it is parental control, it's parental right, if I choose not to have my child be tested, then why, how are we as a district to say, no, your kid has to take the test, that's not, that's not appropriate either, so it is a dual-edged sword, but I think their concern is, they're looking at the potential problem that could occur if someone were to go to an extreme with looking at it.
Do we ask why people opt-out? Can we ask why people? We can encourage people, and we've discussed this in admin team, for principals to explain to parents that it can give their student chance at taking a state, a test, particularly the ACT, which might have financial implications for them, we can encourage them, we have not discussed on questioning parents why. But we can, there's nothing in the statute that would prevent us from it.
No, but I would say that we would know, as principals, they would know why someone is choosing not to be tested, it wouldn't be a, typically it won't just be out of the blue, it might be a reoccurring piece that goes with it, but there'd be those who would say, it doesn't matter, I don't want to take that test.
Well, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Some of.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. So Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee discussion.
Yes, so Diana is not here this evening, so she has given us a memo that talks about the Human Growth and Development Curriculum Review Process that we're undertaking, so in the memo that she gave to the board, she talks about the state statute 118.019, that really is that partnership that's developed between parents of pupils attending schools as well as the schools in the district to promote the optimal health and well-being of the pupils, there are guidelines for the makeup of the committee, there are specific percentages that can occur with whether it's parents, whether it's staff, whatever it may be, you can see that we have an internal teacher committee that has been reviewing curriculum, so the teachers include Bob Perry, fourth grade teacher, Mary Beth Wild, fifth grade, Jason Minan and Emily Calio, sixth through eighth grade, Fayad Health, Nikki Matthews, seventh grade science, and John Kreschek, ninth grade health, they've already met for two half-day sessions and they're, they'll be sharing that with the advisory team, updates will be provided to the curriculum board committee, and then a final recommendation will come either in July or August, and then parents were asked to participate on the advisory committee in a Google survey, all the parents who filled out the survey were contacted to secure interest and availability, they need to make up 45% of the advisory committee, they do represent elementary, middle, and high school perspectives, students were selected with input between Mr. Kreschek, ninth grade health, and Mr. Manti, so they have sophomore students that took the course as ninth graders, so they've experienced it, and then also several students met Mr. Manti, three expressed both an interest and availability as well as parent permission, so you can see that we've attached the different breakdown that we have, we have a clergy member, healthcare professional, residents, administrators, teachers, students, and parents that go with that. Are you on this committee? Mr. Hoffman? I don't have an updated one, I got Diana's notes and I'm trying, I know that, I took it out, it was my fault, I took it out, but I know someone was on there and then I had to replace it, who are the residents that are part of it?
Sergeant Pods and Mary Helen Hogan.
Mary Helen Hogan, that's who it is, that was someone I knew, Mary Helen Hogan, I remember talking about that now. So you can see the percentages that we have set up, we meet, then we, she attached the board of ed policy as well as state statutes that deals with setting up the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. But we need a recommendation, the question, we need a recommendation to approve that.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding the committee? Jeff? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. School calendar discussion, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, so we had this discussion last month, and a couple board members asked about looking at Martin Luther King holiday and adding that to our calendar, but at the same time, not having to be a one or a two-year decision, but a long-term decision, what would that look like, so Kara and I worked through what that could look like, she put down days that if we just did it straight up, what it would look like, and then as I'm writing the memo, I talked about the fact that the semesters never line up perfectly anyways, and so we would be, we'd have the opportunity to move various days, so if you look at, you know, option A, when we had option A, there was 46 days in quarter one and 44 days in quarter two, so there's 90 for semester, and then there was 43 and 44 for second semester. If we were to move to option B and add Dr. King's holiday in on that 21st instead of taking the 25th off of January, and then we would move, we would actually move the November day for the quarter to end, we'd move that to Monday, the 5th would be the no-school day for that, so it'd be 42 days for first quarter, 44 for second quarter, that gives you 86, and there'd be 91, 47 and 44 for the third quarter, so, and as you see, for the next year, it would be very similar with 85 and 92, I think it's that 84, 93, but we could always look at, it may be a year though, you have that Monday, let's say it was, you know, if it was option B, if you're looking at January 19, maybe you'd have that Monday off, the 21st, but you also might have that Friday off, or you might have the following Monday off, that it may not, the semester may not end at that time because you may need more days going into that first semester, so you wouldn't have nine days of a difference, so you might have a, in a two-week window, you might have a Monday and a Monday off, but it'd be obviously well in advance, so it is something that you'd ask us to look into, and so we've brought that back to you to be able to see that. Those are the only, so between option A and option B, there's the only two things that have changed from the last time we brought, the last month we brought the calendar forward, is moving the day from the November 9th to November 5th, so it would be a little more equal with our days, and moving the January, semester ending on January 18th instead of ending on January 24th like it did on option A.
Any questions for Jeff?
Which is preferred?
We are one of the few districts that do not celebrate Martin Luther King Day, they're in our area, in our area, that is probably, we're one of the few, we're not one of the few in our area, but we're one of the few in southeastern Wisconsin, Nozaki County, there tends to be a trend to not celebrate that for some reason, but as we look at southeastern Wisconsin, we'd be one of the few to not have that off, so I think it would be appropriate for us to be looking at option B and to move forward in that way, to have that just be something that we ingrain into our culture, that we do honor him by having that day off and not having school on that day, but this is why you make the big bucks.
Yes, I look at the, this is my last, you know, go at this, you guys to decide, I guess, going forward, I agree with you, Jeff, I don't even think that it's even appropriate to look going forward, how that affects our semesters, because we're either committed to the holiday and to the memory, or we're not, and then we can just, you know, let our semesters fall where they may, so for my purposes, that's what I think the answer is, the question is, do you honor this holiday or not, you can always piece this. You can always piece the semesters together. So how those days turn out, it's nice that you put that there, but that's not a relevant fact when you, with this discussion, I think. But I don't know if everyone else feels that way.
I'm a big fan of having MLK off for the students to do, celebrate however they want, whether it's a day of service or whether or not the family chooses just to take a day off. That is their choice. Individual families can choose how they would like to celebrate.
I agree.
If you're looking for a motion to set next year's calendar, you're not looking for a motion to formally?
No, we'll just, we'll just do it from now on. I just, I just need you to accept either option A or option B so we can communicate with families and be moving forward with that. That's correct.
So is there a motion to approve one of those two options?
I'll make a motion to approve option B.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, I think this is a great day in the Grafton School District. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Excellent. Public-private partnership group formation. This is interesting and it's timely. What update?
So as we, is, you know, a lot of our focus has been so far this year on our, our current projects, you know, how are we doing with timeline? How are we doing with budget? How are we doing with the weather? All those pieces. Well, we're getting to the point where we're on budget, we're on timeline. So now as we reflect back on what occurred previously, even prior to my coming to the district and then through that first year, whether it's in listening sessions, whether it was in the facilities advisory committee, whatever it may be, that there was a strong interest displayed from community members as well as the board to look at creating a public-private partnership group to begin fundraising efforts that, for facilities. So it may be athletic facilities, it could be our auditorium, it could be other parts of our schools that are, that were not covered in the referendum and may not be covered in our normal budget. Or maybe something that we want to add because it's a value add for our students that we would like to be able to do. So after researching the various options available to the board, there are two options that, that we were bringing forward to you. One option would be to develop a subcommittee of the board and then involve community members and then developing next steps for the subcommittee. This would be a typical subcommittee of our board, require posting of meeting dates, there'd be updates that are brought to the board. Because the district cannot be a 501(c)(3) organization, we would need to continue working with the Grafton Education Foundation. Mr. Hoffman is here. We work with them now with the Grafton Education, Grafton Education Foundation for restricted pass-through donations and that works great now. And that would be one option, that there'd be certain donations that we would need to be able to work with a foundation. And we currently do that with the educational foundation, so it makes sense for us to continue doing that. Option B would be to work with community members, to say, we'd like to have some community members start a foundation that would raise funds for our, our facilities. And it'd be separate from the board, it'd have its own board of directors. I was talking with other superintendent who has something like this. They have the business manager on the foundation board and a member of the school board and the superintendent were ex-officials that would attend but didn't have voting rights. And meetings aren't posted, updates are provided whenever, I guess, the board would ask, I mean, or when they would do the want. I mean, you know, we don't typically have updates from either the educational foundation or the booster club or the music parents. We have other foundations that are, are doing great things for our kids now. So it's a little different format that goes with it. I did reach out to Bob Butler, who's the WASB legal counsel, and both options are available for the board to consider, to, to look at. Now is a great time for us to start thinking of, okay, we're on track, we're on budget with our projects. What are some of those other needs that we would like to address for our students in our various facilities and how would that be prioritized and so forth?
Jeff? The foundation and option B would have to be a 501(c)(3).
Yes, yes, thank you. Yep, that's right. Because it wouldn't partner. That's correct. Thank you.
So if we worked with, say, the Grafton Education Foundation and formed a committee, how are the funds raised that way? Would it be the GEF raising the funds?
It would not be. They would truly, they would, they would not be, it's not necessarily extra work. Well, probably is a little extra work, right Bob? It's always extra work.
Can I just say a few things?
Yep, that'd be great.
We've been doing this for five or six years and we've done over 10 of these. And it started before Ken, before Scott was here, I think Ken McCormick was here. The very first bus trip that the school took to all these organizations, that started it. The AT&amp;T Foundation contacted the Chamber of Commerce and they said, the AT&amp;T Foundation has got some money to spend in Nozaki County. Do you have anything you need? And Pam King said, well, you know, the high school is planning this bus trip. You could fund that. Then the AT&amp;T Foundation said, well, the problem is, it has to be a 501(c)(3) organization. So Pam King called me up and said, how can we work this out? I said, well, if they make a donation to us, restricted to be for the bus trip, we'll deposit a check in the bank, we'll write a check of our own from the GEF and we'll get, make that check out to Grafton High School and they can use that to pay for the buses. I also wrote a letter to the AT&amp;T Foundation acknowledging their contribution to the Grafton Education Foundation. We've done 10 of these. Most of them are with the Project Lead the Way HOSA curriculum that Fran Grant runs. As part of that curriculum, students go to Wisconsin Dells to compete, skills competition. And then those that are lucky enough to finish in the top three in the state travel to the international competition. And most of the contributions that I received have been for that trip, for those HOSA students. I'm working on one right now where Fran has got, for the very first time, two students who want to be veterinarians. And she doesn't have any textbooks for veterinarian students. So she's contacted Brian Tunison. Brian Tunison is a owner of, one of the owners of Lake Shore Veterinary Specialists. And he is going to donate the money for those textbooks, but he wants a 501(c)(3) tax right now. So I'm waiting for the check, but he's going to send me a check, we're going to deposit it in the GEF. The GEF is going to write a check to Grafton High School, we're going to give it to Scott. And all these 10 that I've done so far, I've always given the check and explanation to the high school, to the school principal that's affected. And the school principal has gone to the Board of Education meeting and reported that there's a gift so that it meets policy 840. So that's what we've done in the past.
It sounds to me like that's the best way to do it of the two options. Oh, Bob, one of the questions I thought initially, but then I don't think it's a problem anymore. I don't want to compete with the GEF for fundraising efforts, but I don't think this really is a competition. I would think that you guys on the other side of that coin would say, hey, glad someone else is out there trying to raise funds, it will, it might have passed through us. There's no, like, is there any downside to this?
No, I'm, you know, I may have to talk to over at our GAF board meeting. I'm kind of wondering, this committee, you know, how's it going to raise money? Is it really going to have another Super Bowl? Or is it going to go to individuals and corporations and ask for contributions for the school district? I don't know. I'm thinking it's going to be the latter of the two. And if it is a fundraiser, maybe it's going to be, you know, food that soccer team, you know, I, I'm not sure how they're going to raise their money. I don't think it's going to be a lot of competition with what we're doing.
I kind of, I mean, I would think it would be going to businesses and talking, you know, for sponsorships, through Acuity or Ascension or Aurora or, that's how I would picture it, not like having another Super Bowl. That would be hard.
I guess my own sense, what I recall from the facility advisory committee and my own thinking on the topic would be that this committee would work first to identify the needs. And those needs would be a function of what has been contemplated and done through the referendum, what is on the 10-year capital improvement plan and all of the things that haven't even been visioned relative to that capital improvement plan, whatever they may be. And then through some of the meetings that have been ongoing relative to the TIF, there have been comments made that, you know, you've got Meyer, you've got Target, you've got all these businesses out there, but where are they in actual support of the, the identified needs? And I'm not sure, I know where they are, but I'm, I'm equally sure that no group has gotten together and say, these are the things that we need. This is what it's going to cost us. It would really be advantageous to have turf. And somebody recently gave me a, a news article, and it's probably a year old now, Keel, Wisconsin. It's a county board supervisor who actually grew up in Keel and they funded turf football fields in Keel through a, a public-private partnership. And, and I think that to start with, we got to identify the need and then we got to frame the ask. I don't know that that's effectively done through the foundation, the education foundation. I'm not sure that a new foundation, which may be competitive to the, the GEF, is the right answer. I think it's going to be more of a committee structure with a specific agenda, which is identify the needs and then go out and make a definitive ask of public and, of private entities and help fund that need.
I do think we have to make sure the GEF is comfortable with this.
I, I agree.
I don't think we can just say, this is what we're going to do. I mean, to me, to some degree, I think it'd be more strategical if this is going to be, we've got kind of an immediate need with some athletic facilities, but if there's going to be a long-term, strategical direction for this, isn't it better that we have our own separate entity to do that versus wrap it under the GEF?
I think strategically, it makes sense to have our own, well, and to me, until you identify the need.
But our own as in a subcommittee or as our own as in not a subcommittee?
I'm, I'm thinking a separate 501(c)(3).
Yeah, you're, so he's thinking not a subcommittee.
I'd have to, you know, you know, under, I'd, I'd want to meet with other groups that have done this and I know other districts have done it. You probably have contacts those to, you know. What is the requirement, what are the requirements for giving to a 501(c)(3)? I'm a recovering CPA and I don't know if you donate money to the school. I'm assuming that's available for tax deduction.
No, the school district is not a 501(c)(3).
We have a, there's a board brief that Bob Butler has and Tofer isn't here. He's at the Federal Funding Conference with Jamie, but we can, we can share that with you that would go along with that.
And the brief says that there's?
The brief, I'm not a recovering CPA, so I'm going to try not, you're extremely ignorant, but Tofer forwarded it to me. But there, there's just, there's a lot of different rules that go with districts accepting it versus other entities. With that being said, there's a number of districts that are raising money for athletic facilities or fine arts facilities. And this is not a, this is not a committee in my mind at all that's looking to raise 5,000, 10,000, 30,000, $100,000. We're talking about, we're starting at a million and we're going from there. I mean, these are big asks. This is a, you know, and, and I think it's, and I think you could say, well, yeah, we have facility needs right now, well, you know, they'd like to have turf at the baseball field and they'd give turf at the softball field. So that's great. So let's say we, let's say we add, that's an extra $250,000. That's approximately what it is to add both of those. So where does that fit in with our long-range plan though of six years from now? We know we need to replace the track and we need, so that, that means either six years from now, either we're, we're staying with grass or we're replacing the track because we intentionally did a $50,000 solution for the track to make it safe for our athletes instead of doing the $180,000 to repair the whole thing and, and to have a 20-year fix. Because if you were to go to turf, then you're going to wreck the track and so it would have, it doesn't make, it didn't make sense fiscally to, to do that. So it is looking at, okay, well, what are the, so that, that's what it is there. Is there a need to remodel our, our auditorium? Or does that fit into the mix of that as well? You know, we have a beautiful auditorium that doesn't have an aisle. And so it's, it's not conducive to having various events for various people unless you're a kid. And it was developed with a ton of space in between, but you're still having to walk a long ways to get anywhere that isn't as convenient. But it's a beautiful space, acoustics could be better, we could use some different technology. You know, they're fundraising right now to try and raise $50,000 to get, it's about 50, it's about 50, to get wireless headsets and, and microphones for our different productions that we have that both John Long utilizes as well as the high school. So, you know, that's a small ask. That's not, we're, in my mind and in my discussions with, for the time here with the facility advisory committee or with community members or with board members individually, it's been, this is a big ask, but it's a big priority list that we need to set up.
I can also add that this group is going to be looking at facility needs. That would not be a conflict with the GEF. In our bylaws, we are not allowed to do that. We are restricted to giving money or use in the classroom.
Yeah, so it seems that perhaps the 501(c), the creation of the foundation itself may be the funding vehicle for the execution of the work of this committee that's developing this public-private partnership. And at the end of the day, it could take a couple of years to identify, a year, I don't know, to identify the need, to identify a path, to actually go out and solicit that. And maybe that work gets done by the committee and at the, at the point in time that we're saying, okay, let's go execute this now. We create the 501(c) just for a limited purpose and for a limited duration to execute against that plan.
It's my understanding the board cannot create a 501(c)(3). So that would be a, that would be a different organization that would be creating that.
But the committee's recommendation could be, okay, here's the plan. We're now moving to the point of funding, actual development or securing of the funds to execute against this plan. Who's going to volunteer to create this 501(c)(3)?
But is the Grafton Education Foundation willing to have the money as being restricted pass-through that people could write checks to them who then would write the check to the school and can then pay for it?
So you're saying it's going to take X number of months or years to get this additional 501(c)(3) organization authorized and then start raising money? If in the meantime, you raise some money before you have that one year, two year, whatever it's going to take, that could go through the GEF.
This might be a good way to start would be to have this committee get it going. And if this is a sustained thing, then we could go on, but I think it's hard to recruit community members to establish a foundation. That's, I mean, that's a lot of work.
And then have them stay on the foundation.
Right.
So the concern about, when I talked to Bob Butler, the concern would be the work that goes into it as well as the, the idea of like people staying on that committee and who becomes the president and, and does that vision, what if that vision doesn't align with the district? Then, then that, that, that becomes a, a potential conflict as well. Board members are elected, they serve a term and there'd be another subcommittee obviously, but, but then you, but you're, but it isn't just the, it isn't just the, those board, it's the whole board who are voting on various things and you're still getting that, because we're going to need community involvement for this to, no matter which direction the board would go in.
Well, you're, in your recommendation, you're asking for guidance on it. This is the correct time to move forward to at least start the ball rolling and I?
That's what I'm doing with this, is I'm trying to get you thinking about, like, what would you like? What would you, would you like me to bring back more information? Would you, what, you know?
It seems like there's no harm in doing what Kerry just outlined, just starting the committee, getting, because I think that it's kind of timely to begin the process right away. We've talked about that a few times, Jeff. There's no sense in waiting on that end. You can always decide.
If we wait till everything's done, we're never going to get this committee started. Like, because it's never going to be done. There's always going to be something going on.
So do you want an ad hoc committee assembled tonight? Do you want some volunteers? I mean, we can, what do you want that committee to look like? I mean, what do you guys want it to look like?
I don't know if it's a good time to, that, I mean, or wait just one month when we're reassigning committees for the following year? Well, because with the start of the new year, typically like in April, we reassign who's on curriculum, finance, policy, communication, I mean, as new board members enter.
And this is probably, are we looking at this being a permanent committee or an ad hoc committee? I guess you can make it ad hoc for now and you don't have to worry about reassignment and make it permanent later if that's what it looks like it needs to be. It could take several years as an ad hoc, but, so is that permanent enough?
Personally, I think it's an ad hoc committee that's charged specifically with the Personally, I think it's an ad hoc committee that's charged specifically with the development of a method for public-private partnership to address long-term capital expenditure needs throughout the district, whether they are only sports-related, whether they are classroom-related, whatever it happens to be. But as a mechanism to tap into that which we promised during the listening sessions and during the Facilities Advisory Committee.
And then we will, at the next Finance Committee meeting, we will be laying out our 20-year plan. So we have our 20-year maintenance plan, what's being funded through Fund 10, 41, 46, all those different pieces. You'll see all the things that are, that are at each building, that are still in need of repair, when that's happening, all those pieces, and it's really, it's really an inclusive document, and it's, it really paints a bright picture for us with our planning, with our financial planning, to be in a really good spot even 20 years from now. So you'll see that next Finance Committee meeting, and that'll come to the whole board at the March meeting, at our March Finance meeting. You'll see that.
Paul, we had talked about after this, we got through the construction, looking at kind of that long-term plan, but then developing a facilities-type committee to look at what type of facility upgrades do we need. I almost envisioned that committee being that group long-term.
But I think it's, that committee has to focus on the capital expenditures, the 20-year plan that the district identifies, but I'm not sure on that plan if you have things like turf fields.
We don't, because that's not a, because that's, that's an add.
Right.
We have grass, and we have seed. You know, we have maintenance costs like that built in, but in terms of saying, even remodeling the auditorium, that's not a, that's not, that's not an add, because that's not budgeted, because it isn't, we haven't prioritized it as a district to say, "We want you to put it into the 20-year plan." If the board were to say that, then we would say, "This is how much it costs, and now we need to be putting this much into Fund 46."
So I think, Mark, there's an intersection between that which is on that plan, because it's a need, and it needs to be maintained, and needs to, we need to ensure that 20 years down the road, we've got it covered. But I think there's another group of expenditures, potential expenditures, that would be beyond that, that we should consider. And we would clearly identify, this is not something that we will have monies available today or planning for in the future, but let's find a way to get it done. Because it might avoid cost in the future, it might save money into the future, but we know we're not going to be able to get it done. Let's go ask.
At least it's another mechanism to have something on there to at least let people aware of, this is out there, this is something that we would like to have, we can't have it, it would be, you know, something for us to consider in the future, and it might be important enough to someone to say, "I'd like to contribute with that."
So I see it as an offshoot of that. It's a separate committee, but it gets a lot of, it may get a lot of information from that group.
Because I do think there could be things on that list that-
I would agree.
Could be covered through another funding mechanism.
I would agree.
And I think until we identify, so let's use, so, you know, you'll see signs up around the high school, and if you're at Chili Day, you saw, you know, they were talking about the frequency that had been purchased, so the, all the wireless stuff that they have is now, that'll go away because the FDC?
You guys have used cell phones?
Yeah, because of cell phones, because they keep meaning that. So, but until you, until you say, "Hey, we have a need, and we need to raise money," then people don't know you have a need. And people aren't necessarily, in my experience in Ozaki County and in Grafton, are not saying, like, "Hey, you need, here, I just think you might need some money, so I'm going to give you $1,000." But when they, when the music department said, "We have this need, and we're trying to raise money," then now they have someone, you know, we met the other day at one of the concerts, their parent gave $2,500, someone else gave $1,000. I mean, now there's certain, people are saying, "Oh, there's a need, it's going towards that, this is, we need, we need to fund this need because it's going to benefit my kids." And we know that our musical and our plays and our concerts are high performing, you know, it's quality production, so the sound shouldn't get in the way of that. But it's identifying the need and to say, "Would you be interested in supporting this? This is what it would go towards." And you've seen some of that with some of our sponsorship that you see, whether it's, you know, various signs that we have in certain parts of our athletic facilities that have gone on to purchase things, whether it's in the swimming area or whether it's in the gym, that it's for a specific piece, and so companies have been willing to support that.
Yeah, and to me, the more, the ad hoc committee should get formed to explore how, let's talk to other communities, how did they go about raising money in this private-public relationship? And then report back to the board, "These are the ways that it's been done. Here's a suggestion." I mean, how could that committee interface with a new building committee that's looking out at the 20-year capital expenditure plan? And maybe the foundation is the best way to go, or some arm of, you know, you have a charter for the Education Foundation, but could it be expanded?
You could look at the Booster Club, too.
The Booster Club, right. Yeah, that is a 501(c)(3).
That's true.
Yep. But I think the ad hoc committee can explore how that might get done.
So, in no time like the present, we could, we could assign that tonight. I mean, is there, do you have any thoughts on how you'd like that to move forward? I guess if we put a few people on a committee tonight, we can at least get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with whatever the board would like. I wasn't sure if there was enough information. I know we've had, you know, I've had individual conversations with multiple board members. We've had this throughout the time that I've been here, and it sounds like even before I was here. But this is sort of an ideal time to start thinking of that, so it's really-
Let's just get started.
So who, I would think that three people would be appropriate.
Are you volunteering people? Or are you volunteering yourself?
All right, so we see Joe. Paul, are you volunteering?
I would, I would have the committee.
I would like to do it, too.
I guess I'm not exactly sure how to decide who gets to do it.
Certainly, I don't need to.
Well, it might be best similar to what we do with other committees, is that they reach out to you and give a rationale, and, you know, you can sort of have those conversations and-
Okay, that's fine. Let's do that, yeah. Think about it, that's true. We don't have to decide right now. Anybody has a real strong conviction, let's talk as-
It helps, it's helpful for me to know that the board wants to move forward in this direction, because then that can help my thought process of, like, helping next steps with the board. That's really helpful for me.
Okay. So that's the way we'll leave it, just whoever's interested, contact me in the next week or two, and we'll, you know, maybe shake down, and I won't have to make a hard decision or something. Okay, good.
If it's the wrong decision, then he's leaving, so.
Okay, is any other discussion or questions about that committee? Good, that's good to get that started. Okay, so, board goals, second reading. I'll throw it to the chairman of that committee.
Okay, so, second time through, anybody have any specific comments or questions? Let's just recap. I mean, the essence of the ad hoc committee for board goals was to identify five overarching goals, and then within those, or underneath those five overarching goals, to identify some elements of objectives on an annual basis and some success indicators. In each of the goals that were identified, each of the five goals that were identified, again, overarching goals meant to stay in place for some time and be affirmed on an annual basis, we did identify some of those objectives. And at this point, well, let me back up the, in addition, the belief was that these goals would be developed, reviewed, affirmed in the April-May timeframe, so that they would coincide with the development of future goals or next year's goals as a district from leadership perspective, to ensure that we're aligned. So our goals should inform Jeff's goals, and those goals should inform the administrator's goals, and they should be aligned in that regard. So we have some time, and we, in fact, there are some things, surveys that we're talking about, and you can see some of the things in here, or there's at least one, I believe, develop forms for ongoing authentic dialogue with families and community members, a survey or scorecard, whether it's teachers, whether it's parents, businesses, whatever it happens to be. So for now, I think we should just take any questions, comments that the board may have. And then, as we progress through March and into April, we start zeroing in on a finality of this.
One question. On your first one, enhance the academic achievement and personal growth of each Grafton student. Hopefully, you have developed social-emotional baseline, that section. It talks about PBIS and Second Step. Is there something that we could put in that would be measurable for, say, the high school or middle school? I don't know. I know the middle school does PBIS as well. Is there some kind of measurable data?
I don't know.
Just a thought.
Anything in the high school?
That could be measured.
Social-emotional, so, I know, you're speaking, you're thinking of doing a survey for your students related to the schedule and so forth. So I think you're trying to get baseline data, you're trying to get data that would go along with that. We don't currently survey students.
We haven't done a survey on students, anything with social-emotional. We've done a senior exit survey for the last, for the first time last year. That would be something, if you look at, you know, any of our behavioral pieces, we have all kinds of data through our use of Skyward that we could provide to give us direction in terms of where to go, what goals to set. So we have lots of information that way.
And you use Naviance, you use Naviance, which can track a number of different things with students that would go with that.
There's something-
The only concern of, like, naming something is that then, when that program changes, then it's like, well, now what? So I think to say that we want to develop social-emotional baseline data, you might have as an example of PBIS, but it doesn't have to be PBIS, it doesn't have to be Second Step. I don't think that was the intent, I think they were just, it was my recollection, is there's naming programs that we had, but that they, that would be something that we would all look at.
At each, kind of each school, for a problem?
Yeah, because just because, because some of these things we have in place, and it's like, "Oh, yeah, we're doing that," or, "Yeah, oh, you know," I mean, right here, you just say, you know, execute the district system of inquiry and 100-day plan. We just heard Kevin talk about that at his, at his, at his building, but there's other things that we haven't done yet, but that we're developing, or would be developing next year. It isn't even for this year, it's truly heading into the future.
And I do like the annual attendance by board members and the annual Bonport workshop that you have. I think that's important, it's in the second term.
Any other thoughts? What I'd propose is in the April, probably the May timeframe, we went to, I mean, April will be organizational, right? So in the May timeframe, which coincides with the development of your plans, May-June timeframe, that we come to some agreement on these, add or delete, so that they can serve at least as a data point or basis for the development of your goals for next year. Reasonable?
Yeah, reasonable. What are you proposing will happen between now and that people will thoroughly think about it, that we need a workshop to discuss? What are you proposing? Or just that we'll all think about?
Provide additional feedback. If these are not the things that you're looking for, then let's, let's pick a date, the May meeting, and so that we will finalize these goals. As well as the objectives that have been established in each of the bullets, and then our charge would be, through various measurement periods, what are the success indicators? Either, you know, a year from now, I think that's, are we hitting this or not hitting it?
I agree. The goal was that, yeah, once we have them in place, then in a year, we would assess. Did we hit it, did we not hit it?
Are we progressing towards it?
Yeah.
All those pieces, yeah.
Right, and I guess, you know, so, so May would be the timeframe, I think, in my mind, that we would have our feedback. But now you may go away, and something may pop through the summer that would say, "Look, we've got to divert our attention over here." So this is, it's fluid.
Right.
And it may be subject to change, because there's, we ought to be aligned.
And my recollection, in all the discussions that we had, and there was multiple meetings, but there's, that really, though, when you look at, "Enhance the academic achievement, personal growth of each Grafton student, enhance teaching and learning for all through innovative and research-based strategies, ensure fiscal stability and appropriate resources for program facilities, ensure an environment and culture that promotes excellence, seek the involvement and participation in the entire community learning process," all the things that are going to come along are going to fall underneath those buckets. They may not be a bullet that we've identified yet, and so that extra bullet may need to take the place of maybe a different bullet, but it would totally, I think the committee did a really nice job of outlining the things that is true to our educational system. And I think, if I remember quickly, one of you had, like, an idea of even a visual graphic of what this could look like. And then it wasn't me, because I said, "I'm not good with this," and then someone had said, "Oh, I can think of it this way." I don't remember who.
Paul had a draw.
I think it was you, but I wasn't sure. I didn't know, I couldn't remember who it was, in all honesty. Steve, it wasn't you?
It wasn't Steve, right?
I knew it wasn't me, but I remember saying, like, because I remember, I was talking about, like, a visual that would, that would outline that we could, because as we move into strategic planning and so forth, that it would be good to have a visual that would align with it. But all these things, no matter what would come along, it is going to fall in one of these buckets.
Right, and I think our overall goal was that the blue probably would not change that often from year to year, but the things underneath may change.
That's a good point. So maybe it is, can everyone look at the blue, and if they have concern, maybe that can just be brought to the next board meeting? Maybe that could just be, if there isn't, then we just, but at least make sure that's something that everyone would agree with.
I think that's a great point, Jeff, that we should, as a board, affirm at the next meeting that these are the five-
The blue, yeah.
Yeah, the blue on that.
The blue are the goals, the goal statements. Let's affirm those as the goals.
Good. Any other discussion on that? If it's clear. We have an overnight trip request.
Yes, we have multiple. So a lot of things happening at the high school, some that we heard about tonight and some that are different. One is the HOSA State Conference that Fran Grant and Andrew Hudson are taking students through. So HOSA, future health professionals, they're able to showcase their biomedical science knowledge and skills through competitive events. They also have breakout sessions in biomedical science, and they have two keynote sessions. Students will learn not only about biomedical content, but leadership skills as well. So that is April 16th and 17th at the Wisconsin Dells. And you can see that they did a SNAP raise for fundraising, and you see the cost that goes with that for those students. The other one is the one that I mentioned earlier, the Graftonics A Cappella. They moved forward to the semifinals, so Maggie, our vocal teacher, and Charles are taking our students to the March 10th and 11th to Illinois, to, they've been competing in varsity vocals the last three years, it's the first time they have advanced to semifinals. With this advancement, they're rated one of top 50 competitive high school A Cappella groups in the nation. So they go to DeKalb High School in Chicago, and they have their preview performance to raise money for the group, and they're working on some other fundraisers to try and offset some of those costs. They're using our bands to be able to transfer students, though. And then we heard about FBLA and the work that's been going on at the high school. So you have one from the high school with Sandy Giuliani partnering with Germantown High School, Steve Martin, the service, the service of chaperones, and they are competing at the state FBLA Leadership Conference, and they participate in their events, as well as leadership activities, workshops, and networks, and that's networking, and that's in La Crosse on the 8th through the 10th. And then the middle school FBLA group with Lori Mathias and then Rita and Dennis Pample, chaperoning on the 8th through the 10th as well. And they will be doing the same thing, where they're competing in different business-related events, and then adding workshops to develop their leadership skills and learn about FBLA. They're sharing the bus with the high school FBLA members.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the trip requests.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Jerry. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And that passes. And finally, a construction update.
Yes.
And once again, it's all on your shoulders.
And once again, Jamie is not here either. And we are meeting this Friday with Hoffman as an administrative team to begin looking as an administrative team to begin looking at end-of-the-year details. We'd met earlier in January for about a three-hour meeting, talking about just starting to plan ahead to what are those last days of school look like, what does the beginning of school look like, where are we at with our timeline? And then we set this date, this Friday, too, because we knew we'd be even closer to knowing what we're going through doing and so forth. At that January date, we had, we'd started looking at the need to research rental costs for semi-trailers or pods for storage, purchasing storage boxes for staff to utilizing, to utilize. We're developing a color code. We just brought a company in the other day to look at developing a system where you're going to need a color code for each building, as well as then where each classroom is going, so the ease of being able to store things, and then be able to unload them. What are the items, sort of identifying those items that are going to Woodview, what are going to Kennedy, what are staying in those areas. Working with the technology department, we know that once school gets out, we have two-week window of time, and then technology needs to have all of the stuff in GES, so whether it's smartboards, whether it's projectors, anything that we are going to be using in the following school year or in the future, needs to come out of there, because then they'll be abating, and then, and then moving forward with that. So even working with the GEF on some different items that are in the building that they are looking to auction off in the future. So we have a short window of time to do that. Teachers are already planning, we have our April 27th, 26th, we have an April day for PD, and it is, we have half of it set aside for team building, for the new staff, joining staff that are currently out of building, and working together for team building for next year. And in the morning, the time will be spent for, half of the day will be for packing. For packing, for purging, for doing all those different types of things. And then that afternoon will be spent with Jamie and his crew, and bringing people in to be able to move things into storage units that will be stored until that May date, when it'll be stored again, and then, and then moved on from there. So, so this, this week's a big meeting for them with Hoffman, to be able to sort of get some of those things. Last time that happened, we sent out a memo to our whole staff, and we'll do that again, just, there's still questions that people are asking. We're asking more questions, there'll be another meeting again before May with Hoffman, finalizing other things as well, but that is coming up. I mentioned earlier, school security, and so, and even, even making sure that the things that we're doing with a long-term impact, this is an opportunity for us to make sure that, you know, it was, it was months ago that we were looking at door handles. And so little things at the time, we were choosing door handles, and now with the, a more reminder of increased school security, it's like, okay, now which handles did we pick, because there's so many to choose from? Was it the push button? Was it the lock one? How did that work? Because you really want to make it as easy as possible. And some of our doors now, in order to lock it, for a classroom door, the teacher has to go out in the hallway, use their key to lock it, and that isn't, in a crisis situation, you don't want that. And so, we confirmed that, yes, it's a, it is a push button, it's easily pushed, locked, and efficient for our staff. So even looking at our entryways at the two elementaries, as well as at the high school, and making sure we're maximizing that space. So we did a, we met with them on Friday, and, and have a new design that we're, we're asking them to make the atriums a little bit bigger, because we envision less and less families being able to come into, and to come into the building. And so you're going to need a space when, when maybe it is cold or wet for people to be able to stand in that way. You know, we're having discussions administratively of, is now the time for us to be looking at moving away from signing in on things, and looking at people having to have a driver's license, and having that electronically checked, and then printing off a label that would have a picture with them to be visiting our school. So it's that, it's the, on the one hand, you want to be inviting, and we want to know that, we want our parents and our community to be involved in our schools, but on the other hand, we need to keep our students and our staff safe. And so it's balancing those two, and unfortunately, the students, not unfortunately, but some will think it's unfortunate that we may not seem as welcoming as we've been in the past, because we are, have a heightened concern and awareness of keeping our students safe. So all those processes and procedures that we follow, we're reviewing, but right now, the atrium piece is the time, they haven't, you know, we haven't done any remodeling at the elementary schools, so what could that look like? Let's be able to do that, and we think that they're going to come back with some ideas that we'll show the board, that we think that could be very beneficial and helpful for that. So we did that on Friday. So that, that's coming up. There's been some, a lot of construction that's occurred. It's hard to believe that we had snow on the ground just, you know, a couple days ago, but it sounds like if we stick around long enough, we're going to get some more. This is over at Kennedy, and you can see the new, so you can see the old edition on the left, and then this is the new edition, where we're going to have classrooms, we're going to have the LMC, art rooms, and so forth. So the framing is up, and right now, and you'll see as the roof is on, and they're actually starting to put insulation on there. If you click the next one. This is the inside of the gym, so they were pulling out water, they're going to be pouring this week, are they pouring concrete this week? I think they were hoping this week, that was very wet. They actually got equipment stuck in there. Remember, and that's, that was, Kennedy was running a little behind schedule because of just the water, and the, trying to get the, pump the water out and so forth, but you can see that they had, in that gym area, that has been completed for a while, you have the windows up, the roof has been on, and so they're pumping out water and getting that dry, getting the frost out, but really getting the water out, so they can pour concrete with that. And then the next one shows the insulation, so the insulation's starting to go up. On the outside, you can see the windows that are being built for the classrooms, for the natural light coming in. And the next one is showing the area that you saw earlier when there was snow on the ground. So if you drive by on Wisconsin, you'll see that, that there's the windows included, the insulation's going up. They'll be looking to heat that area and be pouring that in the next couple weeks. So by the time we come back for our next board meeting, the, all that classroom space will have poured concrete on the inside, as well as the gymnasium, and they'll be moving in to then start looking at framing and so forth. At Woodview, we have, they, their gym had been completed, and so you see some students. So one of the ideas that, one of the managers from Hoffman has suggested, bringing students in and having them write their names on the concrete. And so classes brought kids in, so you can see them lined up there, and then you can see them writing, writing their names in chalk, in different colors, on the concrete. You get an idea of the natural light that's coming in, in that area, which is great. And then, and then you see, and, oh, you can't see it, but if you could see it, you'd actually see kids' names written in there. I could see that in my computer. But it gives you an idea there. And then they actually had, I gave you access to. You have access. And then there's a video that I thought I gave Kara access to.
I looked at it before, I don't know what it's-
Can you refresh that?
Uh-huh.
It was downloading, but I know it refreshed. Let me share it with you right now. There, refresh that. It's a couple seconds of kids running around. At the, at the high school level, you'll see, if you drive by on 60, you'll see that the metals area has the, has the brick on the outside now. All of that area is totally, walked back there tonight, and like that whole area is totally poured now. So it's classroom, whether it's the, the metals area itself that's been poured. And then they're actually, they poured today for the commons, so the new commons. So if you, you have a minute, you want to walk out, you can look there. Actually, they were wiping that down, pulling the moisture out tonight. So they've poured for the new commons. The, in the new, in the new gym area there, the steel studs are starting to go up, so you can see where the locker rooms are going to be, as well as coaches area, as well as the, what are the family cabanas? Cabanas, there's four cabanas for the family swim area, so those are starting to go up. They have plumbing that is running there. So there's, there's a lot of different things taking place. So you can see here, some students enjoying their time. It echoes. It echoes. But you're going to feel, too, the big space, that's two classrooms in there, and kids running around, and so the space that they'll be able to utilize in the future, and that our community will utilize for different athletic events as well. So a lot of work being done across the district, and we're looking forward to showing more things as we move forward.
Has anyone taken a picture of those chalk names, like from up in the rafters, to memorialize that?
Joe got some pictures from the ladder. We talked about bringing in a drone, he did some pictures. They've already started doing some working there. So we do have pictures from the ladder. Our idea was just to have kids go in and write their name, but once they got in there, we couldn't not let them run around. Two of our gyms, because we couldn't stop them from putting kids in the space that big. It was awesome.
And they're even thinking of like beams, the beams that'll be going up, to have those on the floor and letting families come in and sign. So current Woodview families, current Kennedy families, as well as GES families, that will be coming to one of those places to be able to, they'll do that as well. So there's, they're trying to think of different ways to do that as well.
Well, it must be time for Germany, because my computer just crashed, so it must be, we're done. Any questions on the construction update? Then I need a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Any second?
Second.
And before we vote on it, just if the board would hang around for a moment, Kara has a little bit of housekeeping to do, I think, so just wait a moment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adjourn.